Okay, team. Let's go ahead and start the, um, I knew those two would be trouble. Let's start the study session of August 7th. And we start out with citizen comment on agenda items. And I have one signed up, Carol Matthews, number, item number five.
Mr. Slattery may want to speak too. Do you want to speak too? I had a sign up sheet up here. Okay, okay, that's fine. You can come out after, you're fine.
Yeah, we'll, we'll remember you. Tom, isn't it?
Carol Matthews, 3851 Hoyt Street. Fellow citizens of Wheat Ridge and city council. In the news this week, we witnessed events in the city of Venezuela, in the country of Venezuela, where a government-controlled election marked the downfall of democracy and plunged the once fourth richest country per capita to the brink of bankruptcy and civil war. In the last year, I have attended many city staff-controlled citizen meetings for issues ranging from 38th Avenue to ADUs and Wadsworth Configuration. I experienced extreme personal frustration and the frustration of my fellow citizens as these issues were presented to us with controlled rhetoric which left no options for citizens input. Anyone who attempted to alter the agenda by voicing an opinion or raising a related issue was either cut off by the city moderator or threatened with expulsion by the attending officer. Now, the city council is discussing the format for the public forum, which is to be a broadcasted program where the candidates running for city governing positions present their platforms to the Wheat Ridge voters and answer the questions presented to them by the Wheat Ridge citizens. The rhetoric I am hearing from some of the council members, including those who are candidates running in this election, suggests that the city council and the city staff should have the power to select the organization to sponsor this forum by invitation only and that city staffers should have the power to select questions that are presented to the candidates. I ask the question, is this democracy or is it the breakdown of democracy? Should only the select and those in power have the voice in our city election? Do we citizens of Wheat Ridge need to reclaim our city? Voters should be able to hear both sides of the Wheat Ridge issues and the results of the city elections should be respected by those who are elected and appointed to the city offices. Drain the Wheat Ridge swamp. Let the citizens of Wheat Ridge vet the politicians that represent us and spend our tax dollars and decide whether to or not to enforce our laws, city codes, and city zoning. We are citizens of Wheat Ridge, which is in the United States of America, not in Venezuela.
Thank you. All right, Tom Slattery.
I am speaking on an agenda item. Do I need to wait?
On the study session, we go ahead and do all of them before him.
Thomas Slattery, 68, 69, West 32nd Avenue. And I want to say first that I'm speaking for myself, but in rea, in view of recent issues that have arisen regarding the election forum, I hope that my comments will be received in the spirit that they are offered as information regarding past conduct of the annual political forum. For more than 20 years, I was deeply involved in the organization and presentation of the Wheat Ridge United Neighborhoods Candidates and Issues Forum. At times, I acted as sole moderator or co-moderator of the forum. The city of Wheat Ridge generously provided the use of these council chambers every year for our forum. It was understood that by granting use of the council chambers for the forum, the city provided us a courtesy and was not a partner, sponsor, or overseer of the forum. It was understood that by granting use of the council chambers for the forum, any city review, editing, contribution, or approval of the content of the forum would at least create the appearance of prior restraint or censorship and, at worst, actually cause it. It was likewise understood that Wheat Ridge United Neighborhoods would conduct the forum impartially, not taking a stand on any matter discussed at the forum or giving any appearance of taking a stand. Likewise, Wheat Ridge United Neighborhoods would observe all FCC requirements regarding telecasting of the forum on Channel 8. Because of our commitment to impartiality, the fact that our organization was active in city issues was not considered a reason to bar us from the vote, from the use of the council chambers, nor should any organization willing to commit to impartiality be barred from such use. We conducted our forum in complete freedom and with great integrity in these chambers for more than 20 years. This was continuous through many mayors, councils, administrations, and city attorneys. We therefore assumed that it was city policy to allow a competent organization use of the chambers for purposes of an annual election forum. The Wheat Ridge Forum has always enjoyed the highest esteem of both the candidates and issue activists who have spoken here. It is my hope that it will continue to enjoy that reputation for many years to come. Thank you.
Thank you, Tom. I do have to say that the work of the United Neighbors has long been appreciated. The work of the United Neighbors has long been appreciated as far as conducting the forum. You bet. Any other one who is, is or is not signed up in regard to items that are on the agenda? Oh, we have somebody out here. Vivian?
Thank you. Good evening. Vivian Voss, 6920 West 47th Place. It seems like all of this on the candidate forum has come about because two groups asked to be involved with this and then someone's nose got bent out of shape or their group was not included in the possibilities. And so, we're having two sessions on this subject, which I think is not necessarity, not necessary. A candidate forum is where candidates introduce themselves and tell the citizens listening what they want to them to know about issues. A host can be named, but I'm not sure why, and I don't believe a moderator is necessary. And let me tell you why not. All is needed is city clerk to post a list of candidates on the day of the event. Each one signs by their name indicating they are present and willing to speak. The list that the city clerk provides can be in order of speakers by names drawn from a basket, so no prejudice can be claimed. Then simply, those in order get up to speak and have a time limit they are aware of. If the candidate should so choose to stay after the forum to meet and greet, then good, and all will know when the doors are locked and everybody gets out. I don't believe there need to be any questions asked officially. I feel that probably questions were asked when there was no internet and there was no cell phones and texting and it was more of a one-on-one and questions were asked at the time of this forum. So, all the city needs to do for this event is okay the date for use of the council chambers, the time, and then okay the camera person to record. I would also suggest that maybe Facebook or some kind of streaming could be done and not just Channel 8. And if there's a cost to be paid, maybe that's what the host needs to be involved for. So, a host seems to be in name only. The city clerk knows what groups are registered and active in the city, and I think those groups need to be made aware that there is an election in a year and do they want to be a host. City clerk places all interested groups in a basket and one group is drawn to be the host. If that group does not care to host, then another draw is done until a group says yes. All names go back in the basket except the current forum host. The next election year, that previous group does not get a chance until all interested parties have had one chance to host and then can start over and add any new groups whenever they arise. This is so simple, and I truly wish that it would not be involving the city council. No policies or procedures on this need to be set, and it seems to be running well without that. Also, city council members who might be part of the candidate forum, I don't believe should set policy on themselves that are being affected by the policy. We have already seen prejudice from the council with just the fact somehow this all got to the council and with council members expressing their dislike for certain hosts and their distrust for certain hosts. And I thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay, let's proceed with our regular meeting. We have a presentation tonight from Denver Water. We all have our water ready.
Yeah, yeah, thank you, Your Honor. We have here with us this evening Katie Noel and Jim Light from Denver Water who are going to give us a little bit of an update on the North System Renewal Project, which will be getting underway under construction very soon here.
Yes, thank you very much. As Scott said, I'm Katie Noel. I'm the Community Relations Manager for Denver Water. Jim Light is here with me tonight. I know you've seen him a couple of times talking about our Conduit 16 project, which I will touch on a little bit in this presentation. Oh, is this my clicker? Does it work? Does it work? Oh. The reason I'm here today is to talk to you a little bit about the, all of the infrastructure we have up here in the north part of our system and talk to you a little bit about the upgrades we're planning, the construction impacts, the mitigation and the communication we're planning over the next couple of years, because I know Jim has been here several times, but we're finally ready to start some construction. So, now that people are going to be out there and seeing, seeing us in the street, we wanted to give you an update on what's going to be happening. Before I do that, I just wanted to touch on a little bit about Denver Water. I've been taking this opportunity as I'm going out to talk to different community groups. Just mentioned that we are turning 100 years old next year, so we're really excited about that. We have a lot of celebratory activities planned. That makes us the oldest and largest utility in Colorado. We do focus just on drinking water and we serve 1.4 million people in Denver and the surrounding suburbs. You probably know us best probably from some of our conservation campaigns, some of the bus stops and billboards you've seen around town encouraging camp, uh, conservation. We do also provide much of the water to Wheat Ridge through our distributor relationships with Wheat Ridge Water and Sanitation, Conmutual, and Valley Water District. Just jumping right into it then, the North System, as you see up there, is ending the, is nearing the end of its lifespan. A lot of the infrastructure that we have up here, a lot of it was constructed in the 1930s. You can see that's our Moffett Treatment Plant there at 20th and Kipling in Lakewood. And I put that in there just to kind of show when we built out the infrastructure. You can see there was really nothing around it but farmland and, you know, it was pretty rural, so it was not really impacting too many folks. And now, at that location, we have houses built all the way right up to our fence line, backing right up to us, and that's kind of how it is for the rest of our infrastructure up in this area. So, because of the infrastructure's old, we are looking to upgrade it and modernize it. We want to, Denver Water is obviously very proud of its ability to provide reliable and great tasting water to our customers and also to the customers that we serve through our distributor relationships. So, we want to keep doing that, and that's one of the reasons we're taking these projects on. But additionally, we want to be proactive about replacing this infrastructure. We want to prevent any kind of leaks or service failures that could impact our neighbors that are, that are near this infrastructure. So, we, we just want to get all of this updated and maintained before any of that occurs. I think that you have all received some version of this map in your briefing documents for today. This one's probably a little bit more updated. This goes over the four, there are four main projects that we are including as part of our North System Renewal, starting at the far up left-hand corner there is Roston Reservoir. And we are going to be doing a lot of work on the dam up there, upgrading the valves and pipelines that release water from that dam. That'll all be on our property, but I mention it only because we will need to drain the reservoir and we're aiming to do that maybe in 2019 as a result of some of this maintenance work. Then, moving our way down, that dotted line there is where we plan to build our North Water Treatment Plant that is also on our property just west of Highway 93 there. The blue line is what Jim has come to talk to you about before, Conduit 16. We renamed it North Water Pipeline. We thought that might be a little more customer-friendly. It might help explain actually what is, what that pipeline is doing. Currently, there are two pipes in that system, as Jim has probably explained to you, that sit in an 80-foot easement running from the treatment plant down to the Moffett Distribution Facility. And the, those are carrying raw water from Roston Reservoir down to Moffett to be treated. Once we get done with construction and the North Water Pipeline is in place, the North Water Pipeline is going to carry that treated water from the North Water Treatment Plant down to our Moffett Facility, which is then going to transition into more of a distribution facility. It will have some storage tanks and we'll hold the water there and send it out through our system, but we will not treat the water down there anymore. I'm going to mostly focus on the North Water Pipeline since that's where Wheat Ridge is going to see most of the activity, but I can answer any questions about the rest of those projects as well. Like I mentioned, the current two pipelines sit in an 80-foot easement running between Roston and Moffett. The, the pipelines that are there now, one was built in 1937, one was built in 1950. We're going to replace those two with a seven-foot, 84-inch conduit that will just, just the one conduit that'll run down from the treatment plant. Between Arvada and Lakewood, it's about eight and a half miles that that pipeline runs. And then, we're, the reason I'm here now is because we are going to be starting some of the tunnel work to replace that pipeline this fall. So, I want to touch on some of those projects because those will be the first visible signs of us out there working. This map is a little confusing, but I was trying to give you an overview of kind of how it impacts Wheat Ridge, so let me walk you through it. Up there again in the left corner is Roston Reservoir. The green outline up there is our proposed treatment plant west of 93 there. The blue line again is North Water Pipeline. And those numbers up there are tunnel locations, which I'll get into on the next slide, but I kind of wanted to show you, give you a little perspective over here. I put your water distribution, or your water distributors in here, so you have Conmutual, Wheat Ridge, and Valley Water District in there, in your council districts. So, you could see the North Water Pipeline project kind of touches on the west side of your council district four there, and then council district three is actually going to see probably the most activity. And that's going to center right up there around the Applewood Village Shopping Center, which I'm sure you've spoken with Jim about before. We are going to do a tunnel project from the west side of I-70 there, tunnel all the way under I-70 and all the way through the Applewood Shopping Center there. They decided early on to tunnel that instead of open trenching it, thankfully for me, so I didn't have to communicate with all those businesses and tell them that we're going to be disrupting their parking and business. So, we're excited about that. The tunnel will then pop out there after the parking lot into some residential neighborhoods. I believe it's Mountain Shadows Drive up in that area. In that area of Wheat Ridge, we're going to be impacting about 28 homes that are within our easement that we will have to work with directly on that construction as we move through that area. That's 28 out of about 150 along this whole pipeline stretch that are in, within our easement in some capacity, and we're going to have to work directly with those folks. We've already met with all of them at their homes to kind of discuss where the pipeline is and where the work's going to happen and kind of tee this up for them. So, we've been communicating with them now for about two years. This is again, same, a different version of the same map. This one shows the tunnel location, so I just wanted to tee this up for you for this year. We're going to be starting with the one that says BNSF Spur Burlington Northern Santa Fei Spur. We're going to be tunneling under the railroad tracks and an RTD line right there. And then, we're going to be starting to tunnel under Highway 58, starting in about October of this year. We'll also be, another crew will also be starting on the I-70 piece as well in October. And we will follow with the rest of those locations through the end of 2018. Five of them there are tunnels, and then we do have two open trench areas that we're going to be hitting within, in 2018. The 44th Avenue one there is right at 44th Avenue in Eldridge-ish. It's going to be an open trench along the south side of 44th Avenue there that will require some street closures and detours. And then, the Clear Creek Bike Trail is going to have a little bit of an open trench section there as well, and we will plan to have bike detours and signage around that one as well. Again, those are going to start this fall, so I just wanted to make sure everybody kind of was aware those were coming. And then, this is my piece of it, is the being a good neighbor piece. Denver Water, it takes a lot of pride in, you know, trying to be a good neighbor when we have to do these large construction projects. Obviously, safety is going to be our number one priority on the construction site, but it's part of my job to work to minimize the impacts to neighbors as much as possible, the construction, the traffic, the dust, the noise. There's only so much we can do about that, but again, part of my job is to help communicate that and communicate that well in advance so that when these impacts do happen, if they happen to impact somebody's, you know, regular routine, then we can give them enough notice that they can accommodate some of that and, and work their way around it without too much trouble. And then, again, responding as quickly as we can to questions and concerns. We, and on a lot of our projects, people bring up some issues with the dust or the noise that we hadn't thought of and that we can, you know, kind of try and accommodate or work around. So, we try, we encourage people to get in touch with us about that stuff and see what we can do. And then, as far as communication right now, we are sending out another introductory mailing. I know you saw the one in your packet, but now we have a little bit more detail and we're going to be starting our construction in October, so we want to remind people and provide that extra detail here at the end of August, and we can get that information to you as well. My job this summer has been to go out and talk to the different communities that we're going to be in, just to kind of give them a heads up, let people see my face, ask questions. I've been to talk with the Jefferson County PIO Group. I've spoken with Sarah, actually, a couple of times. I've been to a couple HOA meetings. I'm going to the Jefferson County Advisor, Transportation Advisory Group, which I think a few of you sit on. I'll be there on Wednesday of this week. So, if you guys have any groups that you know of that you'd like me to come and chat with, I'm happy to do that as well. I've spoken again with the city and counties PIOs and talked to them about their communication channels so we can kind of double up. I can get out stuff through Denver Water and then we can capitalize on that using the Nextdoor accounts or the, you know, the websites and the newsletters of various jurisdictions that we're impacting. And we're in the process of putting together a project website. I'm hoping to have a pretty robust map on there where people can click on things and find out exactly what's happening at each location. We're developing some infographics. This fact sheet will be up there. We're in the process of developing a really detailed version of the fact sheet about the tunnels that are coming up, so it's really going to talk a lot about where, what streets are being impacted, where these locations are, how long, when they're going to happen. So, that is just days away from being finalized, so I will get that over to you as soon as that is ready. And then, this is just a creative little timeline overview showing you all the projects there through 2023. So, you can see at the beginning there, 2017, 2018 is just going to be these tunnel projects. I like to think of it as just easing people in with a little bit of traffic nuisance. And then, we will head into the pipeline installation, the Roston Reservoir connection, the distribution and treatment plant work, all kind of overlapping each other over the next five years. Here's all of our contact points for now. Those are also on the fact sheet if you want to get those out to your constituents or if you have any questions for me, you can reach me at any of those contact points. And then, that's kind of it. So, if you have any questions or concerns about anything, let me know or feel free to call me.
Jim, are you going to speak as well?
I was not. I'm.
And if you. Okay. I thought maybe, you know, we'd have the whole presentation and then council could ask questions. Okay, council.
Madam.
Mr. Urban.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. As it relates to the construction, traffic, and the disruption of streets, has there been any communication with the Fairmont Fire District or West Metro and as it relates to their operations?
We've been with them several times over the last couple of years and have coordinated with them during our design process. And Neil, of course, is there? I think it's the gentleman who's spoken. And yeah, we've been engaged with them multiple times.
And we'll make sure they act.
And develop a plan for access in and around the fire station area as construction proceeds through there.
And my other question is related to the, obviously, this is a pipeline connecting the reservoir with the Moffett Distribution Site, but this doesn't have any impact on day-to-day water delivery within the districts per se, correct?
No, at this time, there is, as Katie mentioned before, there's two conduits in the corridor. One of those is going to remain in service the entire time the new pipeline is being constructed, so there will be an uninterrupted service.
And my last question is, I got a call today on a question related to the average PSI that comes into a house, and does that change by district or is there an average PSI that comes into a residential property or do you know of a range that that comes in at?
In the distribution system, it varies. And. I'm sorry.
Sorry about that. In the distribution system, it varies. It just depends on the zone that it's in for pumping, but this conduit in particular, right now, it serves raw water, so it doesn't really have any impact on the PSI. It all has to do with the treated water distribution system.
Sure, I get that. I was just trying to kill two birds with one stone by.
Sorry.
Yeah. So, is there a range of the PSI that they would have?
I've heard ranges of anywhere from like 80 to close to 100.
Okay.
It just depends on where you're at in the system, and that can vary depending on the pumping, the pumping that's happening.
Thank you very much.
No problem.
I think I saw Mr. Matthews had a question.
Yeah, it's kind of a joint question for you guys and Patrick as far as coordination with our developer. Patrick, do you want to maybe?
Sure, yeah, and Scott can jump in too. We've been working really closely with Denver Water over the last, I don't know how long it's been, a couple of years. And on, yeah, on the coordination of, of the Clear Creek Crossing Project and the construction of the hook ramps off I-70. And if you remember, city council approved an IGA a couple of months ago, I think it was about $20,000 to authorize Denver Water to do some new design work on the location of the bore pit on the west side of I-70. So, that has been recently completed, and I think they would determine it's, it can work, it can happen, we can move the bore pits, so the, the hook ramps and the tunneling can happen at the same time.
Appreciate your cooperation on that.
Absolutely. In fact, yeah, working with Evergreen and Wheat Ridge, it's, it's been a joint effort for sure and trying to create a win-win situation for everyone to, to stay on schedule.
It's a large project. Sounds like you're doing a lot to communicate with our citizens. Other questions? Look, not, thank you both, Katie and Jim.
Thank you all so much.
Thanks for flushing out the details.
We're having a lot of jokes over here about flushing. Scott Brink, item number three.
Thank you, Your Honor, members of the council. We wanted to get in front of you, council members, this evening to talk a little bit about street light replacements on 38th Avenue between Harlan and Sheridan, and this relates to the hail, the massive hailstorm we had back in May. And we have these decorative ornamental, I'll call them globe fixtures as part of our streetscape that was installed back in 2002 between Harlan and Sheridan. And of those 72 globe fixture lights, 42 of them were damaged enough by the hailstorm to warrant replacement. An issue we've had with these lights and getting them replaced is they no longer manufacture this type of fixture, and, and actually, this is and, and actually, this has been an issue, um, more recently, even before the hailstorm. Um, you know, we had stockpiled, you know, um, several of these fixtures, but, um, you know, they do need replacements, vehicles run into them, all those kinds of things. So, uh, we no longer have any stockpiled, and so replacing the fixtures with the exact same globe, just, it isn't there anymore. Um, so, uh, what we've done is, um, our operations department has, has done a lot of searching, a lot of homework, trying to find something that looks similar. Um, we have one, um, that's, that's sorta close, um, it's, I believe in your packet there, if you wanna see what it looks like. Um, we also, um, have been, more recently, with our, um, redevelopment projects, uh, streetscapes and so forth, have been putting in more of a standard fixture, um, that, that staff researched and, and started putting in. Um, a few years ago now, we have them quite a few places along Kipling there with the new multi-use trail. Uh, the, the Kipling Ridge Sprouts Development has those in the town center north, so, um, that's an option too, to replace, uh, the lights, uh, out on 38th with those. Uh, an issue though is, you know, we could have a mismatch of lights out there. There's, there's the existing ones out there that, that still work, that are functional, but anything we replace them with, uh, whether our standard or something similar in looks, is, it's, it's gonna look a little different, so, um, and then there's some costs involved too based on, uh, what our insurance carry is, carrier has offered to, uh, compensate us for. So, um, obviously, if we, if we go with, uh, something different than our standard or fixture, it's gonna cost us a little more, so, uh, there's some options out there, uh, depending on, uh, aesthetically what council would like to see out there and how much maybe we're willing to spend, but, uh, we could do everything from, uh, uh, just kind of, you know, replace the, the ones that are out there now that are damaged, or we could, you know, try and do a wholesale, uh, replacement of everything, or, or just replace these other ones as they, you know, uh, need replacement, the existing ones out there. So, um, with that, I just wanna open it up for discussion and get council's feelings on this.
Let me start with asking a question. There are, it seems to me, a different kind of light altogether in sort of the main street of 38th Avenue. It's a glass globe. How does that fit in? I mean, is that the only place those are located?
Uh, yeah, I believe that's the only place in the city we have those.
So they're on the more easterly part of the main 38th Avenue? Okay.
Correct, east of Harlan, yeah.
Yeah, east of Harlan. So we have, in the city right now, three different types of lights.
Right, we have those, we have, uh, our standard city-owned LED, which, you know, I just described that we have in Kipling and that, and then there's also, uh, the XL fixture, owned, owned by XL that we have in other places in the city, um, like along 29th Avenue and, uh, a few other places like that, and the rest of 38th as well, going the rest of the way west toward Wadsworth.
Mr. Fitzgerald.
Um, I think this is a rare opportunity. The, the fixtures that are there now violate the dark skies principles in that they, uh, reflect up into the night sky, and, uh, they also, uh, reflect equally out into people's windows and so on. So this is a situation in which we have an opportunity to get somebody else to pay for more than half, and we get to replace them with fixtures that do not violate the dark skies principles. Um, I'm in favor of, uh, replacing all of them.
Thank you.
With, with the LED?
Which, yeah.
With the LEDs.
Okay.
LEDs of it are the standard, uh, the standard fixtures such as the what we have on Kipling. Uh, and I might say that that also will begin to bring a little bit of continuity because right now we have four different decorative styles around the city, and it just looks kinda strange.
I believe I had Genevieve next.
I guess my question was about the insurance claim. It is part of an insurance claim, correct?
Forty-two of the seventy are that were damaged, um, but thirty are not damaged, so.
Right, so the forty-two, would that fall under our insurance?
Yes, that will be covered, um, yes.
I just wanna make sure the public knew that, okay? And I also am favor, in favor of replacing them all to, to give some uniformity.
Ms. Davis.
So I have just a couple of questions to understand these lights. So, all of them, is this all the lights, are we talking all the lights, seventy-two from Wadsworth to Sheridan?
Uh, no, this would just be all of the lights between Harlan and Sheridan.
Harlan and Sheridan.
And those are city-owned. Harlan to Wadsworth are XL-owned.
Oh, yeah, I know that story. So, okay, I would also be, um, supportive of changing all the existing lights. Um, and I perhaps maybe have a recommendation, and I don't wanna speak on behalf of Renewal Wheat Ridge, but they do have funds for public improvements, um, from Wheat Recyclery that maybe we could use some of that, just talking out loud, um, for that type of thing because I think that's kind of the purpose of that, is some public, um, improvements. So perhaps we could look there too for additional funding if we need it. I'm not speaking on their behalf, but that's just a recommendation.
Always fun to hear about a checkbook. I believe Monica is next.
Thank you. Is it possible to use those thirty lights somewhere else in the city that maybe would enhance, not necessarily on a street, but anywhere else? Could we use those if we removed them, since they're still working well, correct?
Um, those thirty that were not damaged?
Mm-hmm.
Um, I don't, I don't know of a place off the top of my head, I mean, we could certainly look at that. I, I guess the issue with those is we, we don't, no longer have replacements so that when they do go out, we're, yeah, then we might be looking at the same issue.
Sure, but if they're still in working order, maybe we could use them in a park or use them somewhere.
Sure.
Um, instead of just tossing them aside, then we're putting them to good use.
Yeah, we could, we could certainly.
If we could look at something like that, okay. And I would be in support of, this is what we're talking about, right? The standard LED lights.
Correct.
Placing them to this, so there's some kind of cohesiveness at least through there. So I would be in support of that.
Mr. Matthews.
I was thinking along the same lines, if there was, if there was an area that was maybe a little more isolated that needed twenty lights, we could put twenty lights there and have ten whatever, and it's really just the globes that we have to, you know, the poles are okay. I, I'm, I'm in favor of our, of us having continuity like all the way down 38th, to have the same lights all the way down 38th. But if there's someplace else that we could use lights, that might be a possibility that, uh, we could, Renewal Wheat Ridge could help us with this, but we could light up an area that's currently not lighted and, and, and use the thirty somewhere else, or, you know, twenty of them and ten for supplies.
Mr. Urban.
Um, going to Councilmember Fitzgerald's point regarding the dark skies principles, um, that, there's obviously different zones that are related to that principle, and I see the 38th Avenue corridor as being a high ambient lighting, uh, area where there's a lot of human activity, and otherwise, we want a, a well-lit street to, um, to allow for, uh, activities, uh, later into the evening. But, um, in some, or, some other areas of the city, we don't want that ambient lighting to occur near residential, uh, homes and whatnot, so, um, it, I, I, I would, I would go with, uh, trying to make it as uniform as possible and replacing these lights with, uh, something that's more uniform across the city. But, you know, as it relates to sort of the dark skies principle, I don't believe that we currently have any ordinance relative to the dark skies principle, is that correct?
Yeah, locally, I'm not aware of anything, I don't know if there's any, if there's a state reg or that we have to follow. That's a good question, I don't know, we'll have to look into that. Do you know, Scott?
No, I know, I know it's a policy and an initiative that XL has really been, you know, pursuing in all their streetlight replacements and, um, new projects. And in fact, last year, um, all of the, uh, standard overhead fixtures that were replaced by XL were with this, with a similar LED fixture with that dark sky initiative in mind. So, um, yeah, we don't have anything in our ordinance per se or on the books, but, uh, um, yeah, I think just, just statewide and regionally, it's, it's something that most communities are trying to, um, follow and, uh, kinda get in line with.
Sure, but I think as we look at, uh, 30th Avenue presently, there's been, um, since the holiday lighting ceremony, we've allowed the holiday lights to remain up and lit, uh, basically three sixty-five, twenty-four, seven, and that obviously would violate that kind of principle because it does not, uh, shield it in any way, just sort of going out in every direction, and it provides a nice sort of ambiance to that area, I'm not suggesting that. But I think we need to kinda consider that, um, for the 30th Avenue corridor, um, we're not necessarily looking to have the dark skies principles applied on 30th Avenue per se because as you get into the dark skies principle, there's different zones that allow for, um, those lights to sort of, um, shine in, in different directions versus potentially on the Green Belt or other areas that are more sensitive to light, uh, you don't necessarily, uh, want those types of lighting there. So we need to be kinda cognizant of, uh, as much uniformity as we want across the city, there's different areas where we want better lighting than others, like for instance, in some of our parks, we want better lighting, but not maybe necessarily in residential areas, so we need to kinda balance that out, I think.
What I, Ms. Davis.
I was gonna, um, make, try to make a consensus.
Thank you, I think we're ready.
Um, I'd, I'd like to, um, ask council for a consensus vote on, um, working towards, uh, getting the new, uh, fixtures that we have displayed in our, um, packet here that are used in several parts of the city, um, that we standardize those lights all along the 38th area that needs the replacements, that, uh, the thirty that are, uh, left remaining and working and undamaged, that if there's a place that we could use those, that we, that we use those, um, somewhere else in the city, and that we also perhaps, uh, look to Renewal Wheat Ridge to see if there's any bit of funding that they could possibly, possibly provide for this lighting as well.
Raise your hands. Up, Mr.
I just wanna make sure I'm tracking because, uh, I thought what I was hearing is that we were talking about approving moving forward with the two A standard city LED light, um, which is not exactly similar to the... Is that, is that what XL owns, um, further down, or not?
The two, attachment two B is, is the lights we are speaking, two, two A and two B are the same.
Two A and two B, yeah.
Are the same thing, yeah.
And, and so, so, uh, just to be clear about the consensus, which says to kind of normalize them all the way through the corridor, is that, are these in fact the fixtures that XL owns in the other areas?
No.
No, so it, so it doesn't exactly do that, just for clarification, I, I don't.
It wouldn't at this point, um, Harlan West. Yep, just for now, it, it would be Harlan East.
That's what your, that's what your intention is, okay, thanks.
Go ahead, please, show of hands. We're good? Yeah?
I'm certainly not an expert, but I think in the, uh, code, uh, building code, we adopted that big manual. I think there are some light, um, codes. Uh, I know we, we regulate, uh, parking lot lights, uh, as relates to buildings sitting next door to them. I think it's in that section, but I certainly don't know exactly what it applies, how it applies in this case. I think we do have some light.
Some reference.
Yeah.
We'll report back on what, what our current requirements are.
Thank you, Ms. Fitzgerald.
Um, just as another comment too, perhaps something like that might be usable in our, and, it's a little different application, but like in our yards, our, our, uh, our shopyards and stuff that would be out of the mainstream, but. But workable.
Yeah, we'll, we'll check and see what we do have in the books here that applies.
I realize that they're not really work lights, that they're a little different function, but.
I think we can move on to item number four, Emergency Action and Safety Plan.
Yeah, thanks, Mayor. Um, I believe, um, Councilmember Urban and a few others asked that we bring this forward and provide a presentation to City Council on, um, the Run, Hide, Fight, um, concept of surviving an active shooter event and other safety, um, precautions that City Council should be aware of, um, as it pertains to City Hall and, and specifically the council chambers. So, um, we have the police department here to provide a presentation.
Thank you, Patrick, uh, good evening, council. I've brought with me Commander Mike Hendershot. Mike is one of our patrol commanders and has been actively involved in, uh, both the training and some of the work that we've been doing, uh, with our municipal buildings around threat assessments and security. So if I could just sort of tee this up for you, about, uh, a year and a half ago, eighteen months ago, uh, we, uh, started to encounter, uh, on a more frequent basis, really difficult, uh, individuals who weren't necessarily citizens of our community, but, uh, might've been here to show up for a court case, might've been here to, uh, to, to use the phone out in the front corridor, but, uh, were suffering from, you know, different types of dysfunctions, whether it was mental illness, uh, you know, intoxication, uh, or personality disorders, and they were really, uh, pretty difficult. So what we realized pretty quick from, from both the city staff perspective and police department perspective, is, is we really needed to, to reevaluate our, uh, training of our employees, uh, around this, and we needed to, to put in place an update, not put in place necessarily, but update the safety plan the city did have. So, working in, uh, in collaboration with, uh, city administration and, uh, Commander Jepkama, Commander Hendershot, we were able to, uh, put on training for all of our employees at the end of the year, uh, last year on, uh, just, just some general safety concepts. And then certainly, uh, the active shooter situations that we've seen, uh, around the nation have, have caused us to, to reflect and, and provide training to, to all of our employees, uh, similar to the training we're providing in schools about what to do in a, in an active shooter situation. So Mike is going to present, uh, a national model, uh, that we've adopted, uh, here at Wheat Ridge that sort of talks about what to do when you find yourself, uh, encountering a situation where, uh, you know, the use, use of force, the use of deadly force is occurring. And, and this applies not only to, to our city employees, but also applies to you as council members. Should we, uh, you know, have a, a situation that, that occurs during a study session or a council meeting, uh, where there, you know, somebody displays a gun, a knife, or, you know, there's a situation where, where force is being used. So I'm gonna, Mike, if you're ready, I'm gonna turn it over to you.
Thanks, Chief. Good evening, Madam Mayor and Council. Um, I'd like to, if you wouldn't mind referring to, uh, your agenda packet there. I think it's, uh, I just wanna touch on a few things before we, we go into the, the Run, Hide, Fight stuff. Um, in Patrick's memo, um, I, I think it's important to point out how long the city's been working on, on this particular project. Uh, the chief mentioned a little bit that, that this has been, uh, quite a, a lengthy process. We, we began over a year ago talking about this. We brought in, uh, officials from the Department of Homeland Security, and we did a, it's called a Protected Critical Infrastructure Assessment of, of all the facilities, particularly this facility. Um, and we kinda built on that and realized that we do have some vulnerabilities, and all of you should be aware of some of that process, in fact, that, that culminated into, into what's going on now with the, uh, with the outside vendor coming in and doing a separate assessment to actually put into motion some of the improvements that were implemented in that plan. Uh, but if you, if you refer to, uh, the Emergency Action and Safety Plan, that, that should be attached to your packet there. Um, I'm, I'd like to touch on that real, real briefly, uh, first. So we developed this based on Department of Homeland Security methodology. I, I wrote this document, but it was based on, uh, essentially their, their guidelines, what they use in, in workplace safety. So it's, it's designed to be comprehensive and simple enough to where the team, team leader can present it to all their team members, and everybody has an understanding of what we're doing. It was important to get everybody on the same page, so that's kinda what we did here. And if you go through a little bit, it, it addresses everything from, you know, recently we've had, you know, the Derek Brown situation coming into council disrupting city, city functions. So that kinda, kind of addresses those type of situations, uh, how to report threats. Obviously, the police department is the, the primary resource in responding to these type of, types of events, but it goes into what employees should do in the active shooter situation, which we'll get into a little more detail here in a second. Bomb threats, I'm not gonna go into, into each one of these, but it's, it's fairly comprehensive and, uh, it, it, um, it, it just gives a, a good foundation for each employee to have, uh, an idea of what to do. Every employee should have received this. We, we put a little bit of ownership onto the team leaders to present this. present this, this information back to their, their employees. So, that, I believe that process has been completed, and then we will update this on an annual basis to make sure we're staying up to best practices. So, you know, with that said, I think, Patrick, if you wanted to hand out the evacuation map, actually is attached to this. It's an employee evacuation map that we've developed. And it would even apply to, to you folks in, in City Council, even, even tonight, if we had an incident happen right now. If you look at the evacuation plan, it'll, it'll kind of tie into the run, hide, fight stuff that we will get to in a second here. But obviously, you have limited exits to this very room itself. You have the exits back here. We have a threat come to the front door here, while everybody's gonna be diving over the, trying to get to the exits here. Part of the, part of the comprehensive evaluation that the outside vendors looking at should be even, is this room designed for safety? Do we need to remodel these rooms? And, Patrick, and this can be a long process as far as looking at all of these safety factors. We need to have scanners at the front door where everybody enters a building. All those things are being addressed, but they do take time. But the evacuation plan was developed, so every employee knows how to get out of the building, where to go. And if you do have a most likely event, it would be an active threat, active shooter type of incident. So, with that said, if you want to look at your active shooter, we developed the run, hide, fight methodology. We actually did not develop this, it was already in place, and then the federal government developed it in cooperation with local enforcement. But if you look at that document, and then we'll, we'll look at a video that we also incorporated into the training. And then this training was designed to be about an hour, hour and a half, so obviously your time's saved. We're, we're gonna cut, cut it down quite a bit, but you'll, you'll get the gist of the training itself that we showed.
It may feel like just another day at the office, but occasionally, life feels more like an action movie than reality. The authorities are working hard to protect you and to protect our public spaces. But sometimes, bad people do bad things. Their motivations are different. The warning signs may vary, but the devastating effects are the same. And unfortunately, you need to be prepared for the worst. If you were ever to find yourself in the middle of an active shooter event, your survival may depend on whether or not you have a plan. The plan doesn't have to be complicated. There are three things you could do that make a difference. Run, hide, fight. First and foremost, if you can get out, do. Always try and escape or evacuate, even when others insist on staying. Encourage others to leave with you, but don't let them slow you down with indecision. Remember what's important, you, not your stuff. Leave your belongings behind and try to find a way to get out safely. Trying to get yourself out of harm's way needs to be your number one priority. Once you're out of the line of fire, try to prevent others from walking into the danger zone, and call 911. If you can't get out safely, you need to find a place to hide. Act quickly and quietly. Try to secure your hiding place the best you can. Turn out lights, and if possible, remember to lock doors. Silence your ringer and vibration mode on your cell phone. And if you can't find a safe room or closet, try to conceal yourself behind large objects that may protect you. Do your best to remain quiet and calm. As a last resort, if your life is at risk, whether you are alone or working together as a group, fight. Act with aggression. Improvise weapons. Disarm him, and commit to taking the shooter down, no matter what. Try to be aware of your environment. Always have an exit plan. Know that in an incident like this, victims are generally chosen randomly. The event is unpredictable and may evolve quickly. The first responders on the scene are not there to evacuate or tend to the injured. They are well-trained and are there to stop the shooter. Your actions can make a difference for your safety and survival. Be aware and be prepared. And if you find yourself facing an active shooter, there are three key things you need to remember to survive. Run, hide, fight.
So, we, we use that video in the training, and then we have each employee, they'll fill this out for their individual work area to refer to that document. And it, we really stress that it's important for the individual to prepare themselves in advance for something like this happening. In fact, I encourage all of you to do the same thing for meetings that will be held. Right here, we have a police officer here present for most, most of our committees. But each of, each, each person needs to be prepared for this in advance. And we, we really stress that to, to the employees, and that's why we left blanks on the form. They actually have to fill that out with their team leaders and what their plan of action is going to be. Just preparing for something like this is about 90 percent, being ready for when it does happen. We all get very complacent in our daily, daylight even, even to these officers. But that's, that's kind of what we stress here in this program in the city. That coupled with the, the action plan that I touched on a minute ago. But I'd like to go into real briefly here. This is a PowerPoint that we, I want you to start here. There we go, sorry about that. So, this, this PowerPoint is, takes about an hour to go through, so I'm certainly gonna go through just the, the highlights. I took most of the, the slides out. But obviously, we, we focus on the active shooter, because that's what we're most likely to face here as an employee in this building or other city facilities. So, we focus on that versus say, a lawn threat or a phone injury or something like that the police can manage. But the active shooter is something that the, everybody has to be prepared to. So, obviously, I'm not gonna go into a lot of, a lot of significant history about where we're at today. We all kind of understand the, the development of, of the timeline, the, the active shooter incident, beginning essentially with Columbine. There was active shooter incidents before that. But that kind of changed the police method of dealing with active shooters. And then we kind of evolved all the way to where we're at now. We're, we're expecting employees to act when an active shooter engages Columbine. Some of the interesting statistics here, government, if you'll notice, government buildings, this can, an active shooter can happen anywhere. We're, we're well aware of that. Government buildings are about 10 percent of the time we have an active shooter incident. So, that's why we stress this training so highly in the city. An interesting note here is, is the time. And we all know how quickly things can evolve. We also stress that we don't want you to just rely on the police. Obviously, 911 is an important thing to call as soon as you can, but these, these incidents are over in five minutes or less typically, even if the, even if law enforcement's here right in the building. Just a few more statistics there. Run, hide, fight. I think everybody can kind of visualize in their head how chaotic an actual incident would be. We talk a lot about the psychology of dealing with these situations. We go into a lot of detail about that. So, that's just kind of some of the things we want people to, to look for. Police response, we talk a lot about what to expect when the police come. We do a lot of active shooter training with area agencies. We incorporate citizens in these trainings. Different organizations will call us, we can put on this training forum, as far as what to expect when the police get here. We, we trained to, to go to threat, stop threat. Again, I'm not gonna go into a great deal of detail about our response. Just some of the things to remember that we, we stress in the training is, don't run at the officers. They don't, you know, we don't want you pulling the fire alarm or anything like that. That creates a, a lot of confusion for us. But that, that's it, again, in a nutshell, I mean, question.
Thank you. Do we have, since we've, we've incorporated this policy, we've kind of put a program together, do we have any outreach to the community for other soft targets? Our churches, our, our, I'm sure Jefferson County Security does a lot with their schools, but our safeways and what have you?
So, we outreach to, to the hospitals, to our faith-based community. We've, we've provided, certainly faith-based institutions have been the subject of active shooters. So, we've done outreach, you know, next week, I believe, we're assisting the sheriff's office with a safety and faith summit that'll be held at the fairgrounds. We've been doing that for a couple of years now to outreach that particular group. We work very closely with our school district. And if, if we get calls from, you know, businesses in the community, we'll certainly assist them with, you know, infrastructure work and, and training around that, provide this, this kind of stuff.
Ms. Davis?
So, I have just a quick question, especially working in a hospital. So, I mean, they have a ton of, you guys have all been a part of it, like the Plan D training and, and those types of things within the hospital. But I think, I mean, I think it's one thing when it's an active shooter, where you hear pow, pow, pow. But I know that there's training within the hospital of when there's, you know, someone's possibly pulled a gun, but you don't know it. So, I'm just wondering, there's some things that I know the hospital does. Of course, they can overhead page certain things that the public doesn't know, but employees know what they're, they're paging.
You're not talking about Dr. Quick, are you?
Yeah, Dr. Quick, Code Silver, all those types of things. But, but I think, no, that's all right. But at least it, it makes the employees know those types of things, because I think one of the things, being an employee, that it helps you from not going there. So, say for instance, and I, I don't know that we have overhead paging here, but the other thing they've started doing is putting banners on the computers, so the banner will run across. And of course, if it's a Columbine type of thing, you can't do that. But if there's been some kind of bomb threat, and you want to notify everybody to look out for odd-looking boxes and things like that, it would be nice to have like a banner that goes across the computer. So, I would say that maybe if we could look at that, because, I mean, we're on a network, so you could put some banner to say, you know, Code Silver upstairs, so that at least I'm not gonna go and hand my paperwork over to somebody if I know something's going on up there.
Yeah, those are great, great points, and we've been talking about those for years. Unfortunately, we haven't implemented enough. And as, as the memo notes, and I think Chief Brennan alluded to, we have just wrapped up a security assessment of our different buildings, and we're waiting for the final report, which, with recommendations. I'm not sure if they're gonna have recommendations like this, but I'm hoping so. I think our phone system does have some type of intercom system that we're looking at, trying to implement for that type of thing. But I, but the banner, that's a great idea. I never thought of that. So, the rec center is, is really well-versed and, and practiced and trained in this, and they, they have the code system for different events that are going on. I think Code Brown is, is, you can probably guess what Code Brown is, maybe. I think they had one today.
No, no, Patrick, please tell us.
There's a Hershey bar in the pool, Zach. But that's just an example. They, they do have codes for other, more serious things. And obviously, those are, you know, things you don't want to publicly announce and, and, but yeah, the rec center has a great plan in place, and, and we, we're trying to get better here. You know, we don't have as much public here as, as they do on a daily basis, but it's still important that we have systems in place. So, we're gonna, we'll be bringing back that report to you when it's done. I think it's, should be wrapping up here soon. And there's definitely gonna be a recommendation for some, some enhancements to our, our building, which is definitely gonna be a cost. So, we haven't seen those yet, but they're gonna, they're gonna kind of spread it out over like a 10-year period, so that it might be manageable and, and prioritize the things that they, they think we really should do kind of the first year, so.
Yeah, one of the challenges we face in this particular building is it's a 1970s footprint. And, you know, to do some of the things that, you know, you, you might see in a modern school or a modern hospital, more recently built hospital, more recently built building are, are a little bit challenging. So, you know, if you look at the different kinds of threats, you know, that, that, that in today's society, government is faced with, you know, you could drive into the city manager's office if you wanted to. There's, there's nothing that prevents that. We don't want to see that happen.
Drive-through.
But that, you know, that could happen. And, and our comm center is vulnerable. There's a lot of vulnerabilities, you know, in, in this building in terms of how citizens access government. So, so we want to make sure that we're, you know, we remain transparent and open, and, and citizens can, can contact, you know, the appropriate departments easily, but also have some security precautions in place, so we make it safer for our employees. We don't have an intercom in, in the system that we can get on and, and voice a particular type of concern, but what we have done is in key locations, have put alert buttons in there. So, if, if there is, is an emergency, if, if somebody needs a police officer right away, they can push a button.
Yeah, I would recommend looking into the banner.
Right, right, and a, a great, great idea.
Because I think that's easy, it doesn't matter how old the building is. You're on a network, just put the banner up.
If you're there at your computer looking at it, it's a good thing.
Yeah, there's a lot of people that are going there.
Right. You get a lot, you get a big amount of people. Other questions or comments?
LeCarr is waving at LeCarr.
I just wanted to share with council, since I'm in the building every day, and to tell you that this has been a really long process. I, I can think of, I think three different times that folks have come in to the clerk's office as part of their journey around City Hall. First was, I think the Employee Safety Committee did a kind of an evaluation and noted where everything, because there's some panic buttons here and there. And then... And then the Police Department came and did a thing, and then most recently, this company did it, and each time it gets a little bit more, it gets a little deeper into what do you have and what are, what are your, what would you do if? And when those folks always would leave, the deputy clerk and Janice and I would have a good conversation about, well, what would we do if? And one of the situations is that there isn't a panic button in the clerk's desk. So if, like in the film, when the guy just comes in and starts shooting people, and say, especially around lunch hour, when Janice and/or the deputy are gone, and I'm back there in the room, then what am I supposed to crawl on my hands and knees over to where one of the buttons is? But just, you know, conversations like that, and I expect that other groups, working groups around the building, have also had those discussions too, and it's something we talk about, because there's a couple of scary folks who come in periodically and who have threatened to blow up the building and things like that. So it's a concern, and employees are real kind of into it and trying to, you know, be prepared for, hope it never happens, but be prepared. So there, I can attest to the fact that there's been lots of hours spent on putting this all together, so.
Thank you, Janelle.
Madam Mayor.
Are there other questions or comments, Mr. Urban?
Just wanted to thank the chief and the staff for putting this together and providing us with this information, and obviously, it's a need to provide that balance between being accessible to the people while also protecting our staff and our resources as best we can, and I appreciate you working through balancing that, those interests and trying to keep this as an open and welcoming environment for our citizens while also protecting our city staff and our resources, so thank you for this.
Thanks, Zach, and I think for council's sake, and if we need to have a follow-up discussion, the training applies to you as well. So, you know, when you're here on the dais, and, you know, God forbid it ever happens, but it has happened, in council meetings, that you have a strategy, and that's part of the reason we wanted to provide you with this. What are your exit points? You know, what would you do in a situation like that? And think about what that might look like, and how you would get out, and stuff, as people respond inside this. One of the reasons we have an officer here, but that may be, may help prevent an incident, and it might not. So give some thought to that. If you want some additional training, some additional discussion with members of the Police Department, we can certainly provide that.
Please don't share the evacuation map with anybody.
Yeah. Do you want us to give us all of that to you? We could do that.
I didn't include it in the packet.
It is. It's on the website.
It is, yeah.
I took it out of the packet.
Were they passed?
Never mind. Sure I got in there.
Over the public system?
We'll take it down, quickly.
And that was kind of my other concern here, is obviously, you want to provide plans and understand what the, you know, plan of action is, but at the same time, this is sort of a public forum, so we need to sort of balance those interests, so.
Thank you. Jen.
Since the chief is here, I was just wondering if he might tell us how the National Night Out went, because that was recently, this last week, and just curious how that went.
National Night Out went very well. We didn't have a major thunderstorm that rolled halfway through the event and stopped it. We actually had a neighborhood participate in National Night Out. That's been one of our goals, is to try to get more neighborhoods to participate and have, you know, block party neighborhood celebrations. So the neighborhood just directly to the east had an event, and they had like 30 people, you know, just on, you know, from, you know, that neighborhood that were at that. I went over there and talked to a lot of those folks, and they were very appreciative. We had a couple hundred, maybe 300 people that throughout the event showed up over here, and, you know, I'd like to see it bigger, but, you know, I understand it's a Tuesday night, and a lot of people are finishing up vacation and those kinds of things, but my goal is to try to build it out to be more of a community event and promote Neighborhood Watch, and this is part of that program. You know, I will share with you, I'll send it to Patrick last week. I think what, you know, makes you realize that these kinds of events really have an impact on people is when you get a letter and a note from a five-year-old that talks about what an amazing time they had and how thankful they are, and that they're looking forward to next year. And, you know, we got one of those, and it was written by this five-year-old and stuff, and it was just, you know, it was one of those things that make you realize that sometimes in life, it's the little things that impact people, so a really positive event, and we're looking forward to continuing it next year.
My family and I attended the event and had a great time. The kids loved it and had just a great time for the community, and it was really well put on and had just a lot of great resources and fun times, so.
Good, thank you.
Kids really enjoyed it.
Chief, thank you for this tonight. It's certainly something that I hadn't thought about, and this is a room that does have some emotions can run high in here, so really appreciate this, and I guess we'll be having some more. Thank you.
Madam Mayor.
Yeah.
Before we begin the next topic, I'd have, I'd like to read something.
You'd like to do what?
Read something before we begin the next topic.
Okay.
As of August 1st, I've now filed my intent to run for the position of City Council Member, District 2, in the upcoming city election this November. Therefore, I'm recusing myself from participating in the discussion here tonight of the City Council Study Session under the agenda item titled "Election Forum." I do not believe it's appropriate for a sitting council member or someone who has filed an intent to run, a candidate or the registered agent, to set the rules or the stage upon which they'll be asked to participate. Therefore, I will return to the council chambers upon the conclusion of this discussion. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Geyer and Ms. Spalding. You need to.
Yeah, well, I am also a candidate, and I do not believe that this violates any ethic rules, and so I find to stay and participate.
Thank you. Ms. Davis?
I'm a registered agent for one of the candidates, so I'm fine either way. If council would like me to leave, I'm happy to leave, but I don't think that that, I'm speaking on behalf of the feedback I've been given, not my personal feedback, so I'm happy either way, whatever council feels if they want me to recuse myself or not.
Any other comments? Thank you for that.
I guess my comment would be that this is a discussion, we're not making a formal decision, and so I feel that everyone can stay.
Oh, since it's not, got it. We're not creating, this is a study session, is what she's trying to say. Mr. Matthews.
While we're on that topic, though, we need to look forward, and we may send some recommendations to our council meeting, but then what happens when we are making decisions and setting policy? I think that needs to be discussed this evening, and the policy worked out for, do we think there's conflicts of interest by allowing candidates to vote for candidate, forum procedures or not?
I think policy would be handled in a different way than a choice that council might make tonight as to the upcoming candidate forum. Mr. Don, Mr.?
I guess my other question would be if we, I mean, I would think that whatever policy we're going to do is probably going to be after this forum. It's not going to be about this forum.
Exactly.
It's going to be about future, I would say the future, because I think the problem is if we recuse ourselves from making that decision, I think we might have struggles of quorum.
Right.
Too. So any consensus we get this evening is not going to affect the election forum this year? Is that what you're saying? Because I was under the understanding, any consensus and discussion tonight is going to affect this year's election forum.
Which I think it will, but if we make a policy tonight saying as to regard to the future rules or regulations, that would be policymaking, and that we would need, I believe we would need full counsel just to create that policy. Yeah.
I'm confused now, because you started out your statement saying, yeah, it would affect this year's forum, and then you said, but it's going to be for stuff in the future after this week's forum, so are we, are we discussing tonight what we're going to do this year, or are we having a general discussion on what we're going to do after November?
I think there are two discussions. I see it that way. Anybody else have an input on that? I see it as two discussions.
It's my understanding it was brought, it was asked to be put on the agenda again tonight, because there were some concerns about this year's forum. So, and if we want to get a forum going this year, we probably have to have a consensus made tonight from this council. Do you want us to bring in a third-party neutral group to run, to facilitate it, or use one of the groups that applied? That's really the direction we need tonight. We don't have to have a discussion about the future tonight.
Right. Can I ask one more question? At this election forum, is this only for local candidates? Or is this election forum for local candidates, House, you know, HD 24, SD 20, School Board? What does this election forum going to encompass?
It typically encompasses all levels, so county, state, federal government. And that's for the benefit of the citizen. So, yeah, it would include all races.
This year.
And issues, if there's any issues.
Yeah, so depending on the election year dictates what's included and what's not included.
Whatever's going to be on the ballot in Wheat Ridge is, yep.
Okay, that's what I wanted to clarify. Okay, thanks.
I think it may be helpful, too, for the citizens that are watching this at home, that perhaps we should start out with at least a short description of how we got to this issue and what's changed that it's become an issue this year, so they can understand the scope of, and the issue of what's going on now that's different from previous years.
Heather Geyer can do that.
I think that's what Ms. Geyer is here for. If we let her proceed.
Okay. So how we got to where we're at today, last year was one of the first years that Wheat Ridge United Neighbors did not host the forum in partnership with the city of Wheat Ridge. Last year, in 2016, the Wheat Ridge Chamber expressed a desire to host the forum, and we were in a place where I reached out to both Wheat Ridge United Neighbors as well as the Wheat Ridge Chamber and said, is there a level of interest to co-host the forum? And at that point in time last year, the Wheat Ridge Chamber moved forward. There was not an interest by Wheat Ridge United Neighbors to co-host with the Chamber, so we proceeded with the Wheat Ridge Chamber. They hosted the forum, I think it was mid-morning, which wasn't an issue, because we didn't have candidate races like we've had in other election years, and the blue book was read, the pro and the con statements, which is standard protocol for the forum. Going back just a little bit, I believe United Neighbors has hosted every forum except for 2009, if my memory serves me correct, when Enterprise Wheat Ridge hosted the election forum. And then I think we didn't have a forum in 2012, and I don't recall why, but I have a blank date when I was going back through the chronology for that. So historically, it has been United Neighbors that has hosted the forum. The city pays for the cost to televise the forum live, and then we rebroadcast the forum multiple times throughout the day on our Wheat Ridge TV8 system. So if you're a Comcast cable subscriber, you get access. We have our Granicus video streaming system, so you can log on, you can get onto the city website, and you can view the forum on demand whenever you choose to do that. This year, speeding back up to how we got to where we're at today, the Wheat Ridge Chamber, I reached out to the Wheat Ridge Chamber as well as Wheat Ridge United Neighbors, I think it was back in April, and asked if either of the entities were interested in hosting the forum. I did not hear back from Wheat Ridge United Neighbors, I heard back from Wheat Ridge Chamber. Fast forward to, I think it was just after 4th of July, I received interest from citizens for an inclusive Wheat Ridge to participate or host the forum. At that point in time, I shared with the individual that the Wheat Ridge Chamber had already expressed interest and submitted initial paperwork, so, you know, encouraged the individual to reach out to Dot Miller with the Chamber to talk about whether or not they wanted to co-host the forum. And then from that point on, my understanding, there was discussions about October 3rd being the date, there were discussions about the time of the forum, but nothing was solidified between the two entities to co-host the forum, and no joint paperwork was submitted. So as of now, I have partially submitted paperwork from the Wheat Ridge Chamber. I've let Dot Miller know that council was having this discussion this evening, so, you know, she's expressed a desire to host the forum, but can go either way. We held the special study session with council, at which time I presented some recommendations and presented data in terms of what other communities do, such as Lakewood, in terms of who they have host the forum and the moderator and whatnot, and I can go into detail, that detail, if you'd like me to do that again. So we're really at a decision point where the tentative date for the forum is October 3rd. There has been an interest to have the League of Women Voters host the forum, and so staff did proactively reach out to them for them to hold the date, given once you get to this time of year, things start getting really busy, and we didn't want to lose that opportunity if that's what council desires, how you desire to move forward. So we're really at a decision point in terms of who council desires to have host the forum. Staff had recommended in the earlier memo to go with option three, which was a neutral third-party League of Women Voters to host the forum.
Okay. With some, Genevieve?
I'll just say that I was the one who asked for this to be brought forward again, and the reason I did that was that after the July 24th meeting, I was informed that I believe it's an executive board member and the president is a mayoral candidate, so that an executive member of the Wheat Ridge Chamber is a mayoral candidate in Wheat Ridge. After hearing that, I requested this be brought forward again, because that really shows no impartiality. Going forward on this discussion, I'm wondering if we can look at this as a framework, as how a policy or a guideline or a rule should be set up going forward for the city of Wheat Ridge for election forums? And let's try to remove the names and the entities associated with this discussion right now. What framework would we like as a city going forward to show our community impartiality in an election forum, so that when we're bringing all of these candidates forward and we have state, city, school board, and local elected officials, how do we want this election forum to go forward? Totally believe in the election forum, I think we should have one, absolutely want to have one. However, I do not believe any candidates associated with the election itself who are going to participate in the forum itself should be part of the hosting entity. And that's the reason I brought this forward and asked for a discussion to come forward again.
Now, you're just meaning that any policy we would make would be further, not particularly this evening?
Well, we have to decide what to do going forward for this year, but also policy for the future, like what are we going to do for the future? But for this year, I object, and I have had emails and calls and discussions with citizens who object to a candidate who will be participating in the forum, a board member on the entity hosting the forum. It just doesn't make sense. And in the- And in the previous information that we got from Heather, it shows that many of the other cities are using League of Women Voters, which is a, a third-party, neutral, not associated with the city, not associated with any of our, not with the Wheat Ridge Business Chambers, or Business Association, or the Wheat Ridge Chamber. So a, a neutral third-party hosting this, asking the questions, so that our candidates in the city can take part in the forum and be separate.
Ms. Duran?
I'd like to read an email I received for the record from a resident, Jessica Fazy. She says, "Dear Wheat Ridge City Council, I am very concerned that the city candidate forum is going to be hosted by an organization with a very clear bias from Wheat Ridge Chamber of Commerce. The mayoral candidate, Joe Demont, is the president of this organization. This is an official city of Wheat Ridge event and is broadcast on television and funded by this city. If this organization operates the forum with a clear bias, there is no way to unring that bell. To have an organization which has their president, a mayoral candidate, is extremely inappropriate. To do so, just because the Wheat Ridge Chamber put their application in first, even though that application is incomplete, is also inappropriate. Also, to allow Citizens for an Inclusive Wheat Ridge, an organization that operated as a political committee with major funding from the mayoral candidate, Joe Demont, to co-host, is incredibly biased as well. I ask that city council put into place clear guidelines for future applications to host candidate forums to include disallowing an organization to host if there is a candidate on the board of the organization. It is my preference that this candidate forum and all future forums of this sort be run by League of Women Voters, a nonpartisan organization that already provides this service for many municipalities around us." Once again, that is from Wheat Ridge resident Jessica Fazy. And if I could also add myself, after thinking about this the last couple of weeks, and thinking as a even future candidate, how would I feel if a particular organization was going to be hosting this that either was non-bias, you know, at any time that I ran? I wouldn't want to feel uncomfortable that way. I think first and foremost, it's our citizens out there that need to get to know the candidate's neutral, transparent ground. So I'm in support of having the League of Women Voters host this. What I would like to see though too, is the questions coming from the citizens, whether we do a Survey Monkey to have them put their questions that they would like the candidates to be asked, and then those questions are given to, you know, a third-party, either the League of Women Voters, or figure that out so that they can maybe pull 20 or 30 questions, like United Neighbors has done in the past, and we kind of drew them out of a hat. But I really do think we need to keep city staff out of that process. So, one hand, yes, League of Women Voters. Second hand is, I would like the questions to come from our community and our citizens because this is the one opportunity they have to meet the candidate, hear from the candidate, and I want to make sure that we're, you know, doing right by them. So that's where I'm coming from with this. Thanks.
Mr. Penn?
I'm going to echo a lot of what council member Duran just stated, and just say that I, between the last two comments, I largely agree with, with that, just as we try to form a consensus. I, and had, had separately kind of looked back at my experience with, with the questions. You know, there was always a much longer list of questions than we would, than we would actually get, so it was somewhat randomized by, by that. And I think that both allows for questions to be widely assembled, different ways of assembling them, and widely brought to, to the, to the event. They can be published in advance. Everyone can look at them and think about them and wish they don't get five of them, and then you pick out of the hat. So I agree, I agree with that. You know, and however we get, and I know we're somewhat, we're sidestepping the future practicality of all this, but the thing I want to reinforce is that I think that whoever the host is should be selected with the idea of, of doing everything to remove the perception or possibility of bias. And, and I want to state, because a lot of people have come up tonight, and, and obviously there's been some emails and discussions that have floated around through this, there's no, I, I don't know of any, or am I suspicious of any actual bias or anything that's wrong, or anyone doing anything wrong? But the truth is, is that the, the way it's shaping up, there's a high, you know, level of perception and possibility for bias, and, and, and to lose some of the impartiality that, that we heard people come up at the beginning of this meeting speak about. And I think we should do everything, or put in place a process that does everything to make sure, to, to remove that. In this case, I agree with the League of Women Voters.
Mr. Fitzgerald?
I was just going to say, I agree with a lot of what's been said. And I, I have had the experience of being questioned by Mr. Slattery, and I, I think he did an excellent job, and I think it was very fair and very non-biased. And so I think they've done a fantastic job, but on the other hand, they didn't apply this year. And I'd also like to say about the, the Chamber, I know a lot of people in the Chamber, and I have no, nothing against them either, but my concern is, is the same concern that Jen has talked about, and that is the appearance of impartiality. And I think we must maintain an appearance of impartiality and transparency. And I think Monica hit on one of the hard parts here, and that is the questions. So I think we, I, I agree with the idea of going with the, the League of Women Voters. And I think it'd be good to discuss how the questions happen.
Ms. Davis?
So, I'm going to mirror everything everyone said, and I'm not going to repeat that too much, but I think a lot of this, I do believe that, you know, the folks that are interested in hosting it, they, you know, I don't think they would come with an agenda or be biased or any of that. I trust that they would do the right thing, just as we've had in the previous candidate forums. They've worked out wonderfully. I think everybody walked out feeling good about how they were able to represent themselves. I think, again, it's the perception. And, you know, perception, as they say, is reality to people. And so I think if there's that perception, then you're going to have that, that perception of bias regardless. But I do think everybody's intent who wanted to be a part of it is good. I think people were going into it, you know, with, with the best of intent. You know, I would mirror as far as what they say about the questions. I know, I think the two times that I was the candidate, one time, we had a list of questions, and we kind of prepared for them, and they drew from the hat. And I think another time, we had three minutes to talk about ourselves, you know? And so, you know, maybe we could even, you know, again, I think almost leave it up to the League of Women Voters to do it, because maybe they'll say, hey, you got three minutes to talk about yourself, and we want you to address these two topics, or, you know, whatever it might be. But again, I think it's going to be important, you know, if we allow the League of Women Voters, they probably have a process that they do that's, again, fair and all of the above. But I think everyone's intent is good in this, and, and the previous times have worked out very well. I just think sometime, it's the perceptions.
I see.
I think Sarah can speak to the, what the League's process is.
We've done some research, Heather and I, and talked with Lakewood in particular, but some of the other cities as well as the League, and they do have a process. And they've said that's worked well for them in the past. They've looked at previous, questions from previous years, and, and taken some of those questions, and then added questions based on, I, I think the sentiment and the neighborhoods. They do the questions. The League would create the questions. We wouldn't have input into those.
So there'd be no input at all?
No.
Do you know what their process is though, on how they come up those questions? Do they do research on the city, or?
That's my understanding is, yeah, it's a combination between previous year's questions and then the individual city.
Questions would be related to our community and things that are going on here?
Correct.
Okay. And then one quick question. Heather, you had mentioned something about a moderator. We have funds, and you were looking at maybe hiring a moderator, a neutral?
We can, if that's council's desire. In the past, the host organization has always provided the moderator.
Okay.
But that is a decision point, and it can be an issue of perception. So the way other cities manage that, and, and I recommend this, Lakewood, for example, they hire a TV personality, so you have a very neutral, you know, someone who is well-spoken and keeps the event running.
Sure.
And so they've used Ed Sardella in the past, an individual such as him. We can certainly probably find funding in the budget to accommodate that.
That's in conjunction with the League?
That would be in conjunction with the League, yes. The League, their process is they will find a moderator amongst their members. They have a pretty robust training program, from my understanding, in terms of having teams that go out and assist communities like ours in hosting a forum, but we could work with them and let them know that we like a moderator, because the League works with Lakewood. So they're familiar with having a TV personality alongside their members who are working to host the forum in Lakewood. So that shouldn't be an issue if that's what you desire.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Mr. Fitzgerald, Mr. Matthews hasn't had a chance.
Just a quick clarification. You said that you had contacted the League. Have they responded that they are able to do it this year?
They have, yes. They're holding that date of October 3rd. But we haven't gone into considerable discussion about logistics, just.
But they are available.
Yes.
This is all.
They did reply that they're available.
Now, Mr. Fitzgerald?
Okay. I, I, I think I missed something you said. Did you ask whether or not the League provided the questions to the candidates in advance? Is that what you asked?
I didn't ask that.
Oh, if they did, you asked if they did the question?
I think that has been done in the past. Well, it happened, I, I remember that before having the candidate. Well, in previous candidate forums, I remember having the questions in advance so that we were prepared to answer them, but they came to us in a random way, meaning there was 10 possibilities, and, oh, this is the one you got.
But that wasn't the League of Women?
No, it wasn't the League. That was with United Neighbors.
And then I can't.
We asked the questions, made love ourselves, and asked the other candidates, soliciting them, drew them out of the app.
Okay.
We went with the soliciting the question, drawing it out of the app, because our objective was questioning.
Yep. Yep, and that worked quite well.
And that, I think, was the best we ever did. But the key is getting around the city, to get people to send the question in.
Right.
I went to every board, the commission, asked them to submit questions, asking the Delaware neighbors to submit questions. I don't know if we got an ad in the newspaper, but we tried to really hit word around the city, if we wanted questions, and they were not submitted to the city, they were submitted to us.
Well, we certainly appreciate all the time you have spent on this in the past. We really do.
And in the past.
So with the League though, they would be doing this?
They would.
They would be doing it.
Yeah, okay.
Mr. Matthews?
I think, I'm, I'm, from what I'm hearing, it's made time to try and put the consensus together. So I would move for a consensus that for this year, we employ, and I don't know if they're paid or not, but use the League of Women Voters to moderate our forum.
Or mean, hold host.
Hold, moderate and hold host and sponsor our forum. That for this year, we would allow the flexibility of having both citizen-submitted questions and some of their prepared questions, because if there's also going to be like county issues and what have you, I think we ought to leave ourselves open to have, having that mix, but definitely have some citizens' input. And then somewhere about the first of the year, after new council members have a chance to kind of settle in a little bit, we bring this up to council for setting a permanent policy and try to have this set up by February, March at the latest, so that whatever organization's going to do it, we're well ahead of the curve for the next election. But we finalize a permanent procedure after this election.
Question?
Yeah.
Should we separate this into two consenses?
I think so.
One for the League of Women Voters?
That's fine. I, I, I would submit that we should ask for consensus that we use the League of Women Voters this year, with a mix of their questions and citizen questions.
I want to keep the question part separate from the League of Women Voters actually hosting the event, and then have another consensus regarding the questions.
That's fine.
Okay.
Yes.
We don't usually go back and forth with.
I think you should really encourage the League to understand that they need to cover the entire Wheat Ridge ballot, and that's a, that's a heavy undertaking.
Okay.
But to do the forum right, I think that's what you have to do.
Cover the entire ballot?
Yes.
All right. Thank you, Tom. All right. We have, we have, on the floor, first consensus, which is have the League of Women Voters host the 2017 candidate forum. All in favor? Okay, we've decided that. Now we have another.
I would rather see the League of Women Voters do the work, do the questioning, they do this all the time, correct? And they really do tailor it toward the community, so I don't have a problem with the League of Women Voters putting the questions together. So I would like to get a consensus on that.
So we have a group consensus then on the League of Voters providing the questions. The last item, I think there's two more actually.
Can you restate that, please?
The League of, the consensus is that the League of Women Voters will provide the questions. They will incorporate ballot questions as far as candidates, as issues, if there are issues.
Mm-hmm.
Right? We still have two more things. We have to determine the moderator, whether that would be provided by the League, or whether that would be provided by an outside source or an outside personality?
Think we should leave it up to, to their organization. They do it as a standard practice, and otherwise it's going to get, you're going to, you start getting an awful lot of Indians in, in the mix.
So a consensus to letting them moderate? The League of Women Voters moderate?
Provide, provide.
Provide the moderator.
Okay.
What, what was the consensus on council member Duran's unanimous?
And our final one is that following the election, that we would pursue making a policy in regard to how we handle future, future election.
I'd like to speak to that a little bit.
Go ahead.
Why don't we just say that if, if it doesn't work out this year, then we can change it after, after that. We'll keep it on our, the, the top of our agenda right after the, the new year comes. But if nothing goes wrong, there's no reason to change the recipe. We can just assume this is the permanent way of doing things unless.
Point of order? We can't do that tonight. We're setting policy at a study session.
You can make consensus.
We're stretching it.
Right.
We're stretching the bounds, you know, right now as far as.
So simplify the consensus.
Acting on it.
Right. So then the simplified consensus would be, we'll talk about this after the election again.
We'll have a review period after the election. Would that make it simple? All right. Anything else on that subject?
No, thank you.
That ended up being a much bigger discussion, didn't it? From the get-go, this is the third night of it. We're going to move on to elected officials' reports. The Education Alliance, you decided to hold on till a couple of weeks or after Labor Day? Ms. Davis?
We had a renewal Wheat Ridge meeting last week, and there were a couple of agenda items discussed, which was Swiss Flower Shop. items discussed, which was Swiss Flower Shop requesting TIF for addition that they're doing, and then also some information that we talked about, Hossian to Colorado, that we've talked about previously with Council.
The Business District approved some grant applications from a property owner who is renewing a building on 44th Avenue, just west of the Club Corner, I think, that, the bar on 44th and, and Wad's, just to the west of that. So there, there, that's, that is for rent right now, and there will be a new tenant going in there, and the building is being refurbished to suit that new tenant, and we approved a whole, a whole host of grants for that, that building.
West of Wad's?
West, west of.
So where Vern's was?
West of where Vern's was.
Okay. You said Club Corners. I'm like, mm.
Okay, I, I'm sorry, not Club Corners, west of where Vern's.
The Dahl Hospital is over there, isn't it?
Well, there was, I think there was a fireplace store in there.
Yeah.
Oh, that's right. That's right.
Thank you. Normally, I don't worry much about rumors, but there's been a rumor going around the city lately that has been also used to try and get some candidates to make and change decisions on whether or not they're going to run in District Four. And the rumor is that due to dire medical needs, I am going to be resigning my seat on the Council. And so if I can borrow from Mark Twain, "The report of my impending doom and resignation is greatly exaggerated and not to be believed." Thank you.
Nothing this evening. Thank you.
Ms. Duran?
Nothing tonight. Thank you.
Well, I have a couple of things. Let me do the easy ones first. First of all, renewal Wheat Ridge, we have an opening there. I have met with three candidates, possible candidates, and we have met with them, along with Tim Rogers, the chair of the Urban Renewal, and we have a information out, asking any other candidates that might apply. I can't remember what the deadline is, something like the 15th of this month, but I will meet with anybody who applies. I went to Metro Mayor's last week and learned a few things. State of Colorado, there might be a ballot question, I don't think it's this year, it could be next year, as to transportation tax, because our state highways and bridges are in such terrible, terrible shape, and we've not been able to get any increase in the gasoline tax from the federal government. That could be a .50 or a .63 tax increase. RTD, there was a good discussion. Dave Janobah, who is the managing director of RTD, and, and came and discussed our station. They've had frequent, frequent meetings with the Federal Railroad Agency. Still, we don't have clearance. The testing has gone well, and they've gotten very close to the, to the timeframe as far as when the train arrives and departs, et cetera. That has to be very exacting. The feds are very, very particular about that, and since the technology is new, they want lots and lots of testing. So we're, we're still in the testing stage, but it is looking hopeful. And the last item is that I was very concerned that one of our speakers felt that perhaps we were being unfair as far as listening to speakers and, and giving them time to speak. I don't believe that, that we have done that, but anytime I hear something like that, it's of concern to me because I think we try very hard to be fair to all speakers, and that would be the policy that I would tend to continue to maintain. Other than that.
Joyce, just something real quick, if you're done?
Sure. I forgot to ask you.
No, sorry. Just Carnation Festival, I know a few of you said you won't be able to walk, but I just need, we just want to know if you need any assistance from staff, if you choose to walk individually or as a group. Do you need anything from us logistically? Otherwise, I don't need you to tell me if we're walking or not, but in the past, we've, we've, we've put together trailers and purchased candy and different stuff. So if you'd like staff to do something, we'd like to know. If not, we'll just play it by ear, and if you walk, you walk. If you don't, you don't. Any, any comments or suggestions or any assistance needed?
Easy chair on wheels with a fan and a cold drink?
Okay. I'll work on that. You're ill, Larry. You should be walking.
A wheelchair with flames.
And you, you want the, you want the kids to throw candy at you, right?
Okay.
I'll take that as a no. Good night, everyone.